I'd like to invite you to stand with us and let's begin with a prayer and then if you will remain standing and join us in the pledge of the flag. I'm gonna call on Sheriff Turman to open the meeting with prayer, please.
It's about head guy. Our head and father we come to you with a humble heart, a heart of thankfulness and a heart of gratefulness. Thank you for allowing us to come together and discuss the topics and the needs of this county. We live in no other country that could possibly hold a life to the United States. And God, I pray that you heal the United States and see, you know what's going on. And I pray that, I pray that you give us some type of ability to have some type of common sense. And God, I pray that you be with these commissioners today and help them through their decision process on the items that are up and coming there, Lord. I pray that you be with my, my, my officers, my corrections officers, my deputies, keep them safe as well as other first responders. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Join us for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Certainly thrilled for all of you to be here. Thank you for your interest in the business of Covington County Commission. Especially interested in what's in the box out front since we don't have a clue. So we're just looking forward to it. Where's that come up, Sheriff?
It comes up in a little bit, but we have our little, from the late officials, it'll take about that long.
Okay, good deal. Well, thank you all. We have no scheduled public hearings or neither do we have comment from citizens scheduled. We do have awards and presentations and none scheduled there. Do you have something?
I do.
Okay, come, come ahead. So this is Zach Mayo from the Andalusia Star News. Now tell them what he has.
So every year the Star News does a Reader's Choice Awards Contest. And this year we had two categories pertaining to the county. Best favorite local elected official and best favorite local first responder. We had some tight races this year considering the elected official was between our own sheriff, Blake Turman, Matthew Hammond, our state representative for this district, and who was the third one?
Mayor.
I can't remember. But anyway, Sheriff Turman was the favorite local elected official.
Good deal.
So I have the privilege of presenting this to him today.
Good, I appreciate that.
And one of Sheriff Turman's deputies, everybody knows Todd Grimes, it's no surprise, he was named the very favorite local first responder.
Good deal. Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
Can get back to reporting now. So comment from other elected officials. Judge, do you have anything?
I have to say.
Okay.
I just wanted to mention.
This is revenue commissioner Chuck Patterson.
Thanks y'all for allowing me to say this. We're gonna start mailing tax bills out this week. So October 1 they'll come due. And if there's anything that anybody needs or any questions, they have far as please call our office.
Now, at the, one of the recent meetings you mentioned people over age 65 could apply for what?
That's correct. If you're over 65, if you're over 65 before September 30th, which is in a few days, then you'll be able to apply for over 65 for next year. And that will exempt you, it's based on your income, the $12,000 threshold, or if you're disabled, then it's totally exempt. And so you can fill the paperwork out, we'll be glad to help you with the paperwork and get that filled out. And that will exempt you from your home, not your, if you got land or something of that nature, but your home, it will exempt you from your home taxes.
Okay.
What all, documentate anything you need to, what information do you bring?
Well, they'll have to have their social security 100% disability papers or their service related, military service related 100%. They'll need those paperworks and then they'll need proof, like their driver's license, that that's who they are.
Or if they're over 65, then you just, do you bring a tax return or what?
That's correct. The 1040 tax form, there's certain lines that we'll look at that shows your adjusted gross income, they change every year. I don't know exactly what the line it was, I think it was 11 last year, but we'll have to look, but we'll look at that 1040 form and your state income tax forms.
Okay, good. Well, that hit me right between the eyes last time because I realized I'm over 65, so I was glad to hear that.
That's correct. So, anything else y'all think of? Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Kenneth, they got your attention too, did they?
Yeah.
All right. Okay.
I wanted to give a quick little demonstration today. We have recently acquired a canine from Andalusia County Sheriff's Office. Canine's name is Bruno. He is half Belgian Malinois and half German Shepherd. He is ranked number five in the United States as narcotics dog. Okaloosa County donated to us free of charge. The dog was initially trained in three areas, and that is narcotics detection, tracking, and patrol. Well, the dog was washed out because of the patrol. The dog was not aggressive enough to be a patrol dog. But he still has narcotics in search, or narcotics in tracking. So it fit right in with our agency because we're not interested in patrol dog. And we have him free of charge and I would just like to show y'all just how impressive this dog is. You know, dogs believe it's a game when it comes to finding narcotics. They're, they just want their toys, just a game to them. And this dog is very active, it's very, it's very, has a really strong work ethic. And he follows lots of different commands. And he, this one particularly tickles me because he will not go to the bathroom until you tell him to. That's pretty impressive about when it comes to a dog. They have a certain command and he go out there and he, he does his little thing. So let me, let me bring him on in here and y'all get introduced to one of our newest members is Bruno and his handler is going to take cat and hose. This is Bruno.
Bring him up, Ben.
Which one?
Which one Bruno?
What's the dog?
Bruno likes her better. Bruno likes her better, okay?
How old's Bruno, Tom? He's five years old.
Says 23.
Yeah.
Give it a rest. He gets us.
Human ears?
Yeah, maybe an human ear.
That's good.
Sit. Off, 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 off. Good boy. Check, check. Good boy. Yeah. It's, it's obviously, it sits. He's a sit dog. And that's what, that's what we like because when you, when you come to, you know, these dogs are videoed just about their whole career. So when they make an alert, if they, if they alert and they sit, that's a good way to show a jury or prosecutor that the alert was positive. So there are drugs here and we, of course, our training aids, but y'all meet Bruno.
All right. You got a last name?
Bruno. Thank you, Tom.
Anybody have questions for Thomas or Bruno?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the first test.
They might slobber him.
Thank you, Thomas.
Thank you.
All right. We also have visiting with us, Alex Reynolds from Congressman Barry Moore's office. Alex, we appreciate you being here with us today. We'll give you the floor for, what, up to 30 minutes?
There we go. That's, I was planning for 45, but 30, I think I can shorten it down. Thank you Chairman White and Commission and Department Heads and citizens of Covington County. It's always great to be here. I'm Alex Reynolds, I'm a field representative for Congressman Moore. He brings his regards through me this morning, but always good to be here in Covington County. And I'm just glad that the sheriff demonstration wasn't a taser demonstration because I was sitting too, too close for him for that, but anyways.
We need to volunteer.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just glad, but anyways, that's exciting and a good resource for the county for sure. But a couple things really, just, you know, from our office's perspective, you know, it's a mess in DC. I probably can't tell you anything you don't already know, but the biggest things right now are, you know, it looks like it's gonna come to a government shutdown here in a couple of days. Negotiations are ongoing as far as spending, you know, there's still talks of a continuing resolution and things like that, but those are ongoing. So I'm not sure kind of what the final proposal will be on that, but that's what we're headed towards. So we'll continue to send out press releases and stuff through our office. And that's a good segue just to remind everybody about two resources here in Covington County. Number one, we have an office here in Covington County and Ms. Amelia McMahon is here in Covington County for, for the congressman. But we also have a newsletter that you can sign up for on our, on Congressman Moore's website. And, you know, we get press releases and stuff like that and opportunity to give opinions and feedback and that sort of thing. So wanted to mention that. And then the other thing with the redistricting, the media released a couple of the maps yesterday. The District Court will meet next Tuesday and hear those maps from the, from the other side, in my opinion. And just, so that's, that's still up in there, there's lots up in there. But all three of those maps had Covington County in with a large part of the wire grass in the new District One is what it would be. So anyways.
The county as a whole?
Yes, sir, as a whole. So, you know, I think that's, you know, my personal opinion, I think that's a good thing, try to keep the wire grass together, but, and not split counties apart, but it's, it's not final yet. So we'll keep you guys updated on that best we can and, and everything. So the last thing I wanted to mention is the congressman just started a monthly grant newsletter. And I'll make sure that you guys receive that and everything, that the, we spend a significant amount of time each week going through federal grant opportunities and that sort of thing. So we've started a newsletter to kind of send out to the communities and counties and cities and stuff. So we'll make sure you guys are signed up for that and just, I'll, I'll hang around if anybody needs a business card or something like that, but reach out to us and let us know how we can help. And thank you for the time.
Certainly will. Thank you, thank you, Alex, for being with us today. Appreciate what you and your office do to serve our communities. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have emailed the minutes from the September 12th meeting out to the commissioners. You've had a chance to review those or any corrections, changes, or is there a motion to approve?
I'm making motion.
Second.
Motion and second to approve those. Nobody else had a correction to note? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same say. Okay. Next, under old business is consider the preliminary engineering assessment for economic development. You'll remember this was the item where CDC, CDG, I'm sorry, Engineering had submitted a proposal to do an engineering assessment related to sewer service to what is a proposed industrial site. The proposed, the cost of that, their proposal was $9,100. We were asked to see if River Falls might join us since the stubout of that service would be on the River, River Falls side of Kaneka River. And River Falls did look at that and the council has approved $3,000 as their contribution toward the $9,100 cost. So I would love for the commission to take action to enter this agreement with CDG so we can get that service underway. Just a reminder, there's, there are extraordinary amounts of water, sewer, and broadband funding available in our state right now because of our funds. So we're, but we're going into the third year of those funding cycles. So that money, that pot that's set there initially, as they have granted awards, has dwindled down. I don't know that there'll be another year after the year that we're just going into, there may be. There's no way to know, but I suspect we're getting near the end of that funding. So I would love for us to get our name in the hat and see if we can pull down some federal funds to help, help develop a future industrial site for our county. And so that's what this is relating to. What are your thoughts on it?
Well, first of all, Greg, I contacted the lady from the Growing Alabama Funding, and I think that was the one originally that Mr. Clifton had talked to us about. It does say, as you told us, that the application deadline is October the 3rd. It would, the next meeting for the awards would be in October 31st. But with that, it also says that that would be the final meeting, but the commission will have 23 million in funding for 2024.
Okay.
Because that's coming from state. So if we don't do it right now, obviously the funding will be there next year.
And that's what I'm saying. I think that we've, we've missed the, the window has been missed for this, for the current year, but I didn't know how much it was. The 23 million gives me hope that we can get some funding that will help us do a project.
If it's supplied for, I guess, under the.
The soon, I think the sooner we get the application in, the better.
And the only other thing that I found out from this, I did ask about owning the property that the funding would go towards, and yes, you do have to own the land. And we don't own it.
That's.
We would have to purchase.
So what we're talking about is a preliminary assessment, right?
Yeah, I know.
To determine what all is involved in obtaining funding, so. That is right. To, to make application for that pot of money or our portion of that pot.
Then we would have to own the land. If we made the application, if we did it as the commission, we would have to think about that first, too. That's my biggest concern along with the fact, I feel like, and I've said this and I actually talked with Morgan this morning, she explained it to me, that Arkland is a private entity. That's my concern. I do see the need in the idea of helping a private business, I do. But we have lots of private businesses in this county that also would like to have help too. And I think we have to consider all of that. I would like to see Arkland pay a portion of this survey. That's my opinion. And, you know, I get one vote, so, but that's the way I feel.
In response to that, Lynn, the, the initial proposal for the preliminary engineering assessment is to lay out for local communities, the opportunities that are there, a proposal for how to, how lines would run to get to the proposed industrial sites. The Arkland interest was a later coming item that should add points to the, to the application if you make application. If we, the originals, this original assessment would just give us our, our idea of what the cost may be and what the obstacles are to overcome and what the service, how we can serve the communities largely. And then, and then the Arkland part came on later. It adds points to your, to your application to help us ultimately in making an application for a 2 million, or 3 million, or $10 million grant, depending on what the original assessment tells us. So this is not an Arkland project, this is our project. Ours meaning the community.
Our original understanding.
I think it called my attention that you just said we have to own the property that it goes to.
Well, and that's part of what they will bring back to us, Michael, from the, with the 9,100, they'll come back to us and say, here are the, here are the ground rules for this pot of money. Here's what you have to do. You, you may have to own the property or you may have to have options on it. You'll obtain, you will obtain utility rights of way and that gives you ownership. And those are the things that we just need to know before we move forward. It's just, you're, we're not gonna understand all that from an email or a phone conversation. I certainly don't. And I don't think any of the rest of us can, so.
Morgan, do you know if you have to actually own the property? Because if we, the problem, the thing that just come to my mind is, okay, if we don't own the property, we spend the 9,100, then all of a sudden, what we do if they say, okay, well, you gotta get, you get, you apply for the grant, you get the grant, but we don't own the property it's going to.
And we've also got across the river with this too, with this sewer situation.
What is that? Kind of a catch 22?
I think to know the specific question about ownership of property as it relates to grant funding, the details of the specific sources of funds will come into play. So I can't answer that broadly. I can share with you that the commission does have some constitutional authority to be able to do projects like this by its own determination. So outside of other funding sources, you may hit some limitations, right? Some other funding source may say that you're required to own the property. I would say just as a, for what it is worth for your consideration, there is some ability for the county to, to operate in this arena without ownership of the property.
So you can do, you can apply for a grant, but we don't have to actually own the property it's going to?
What I'm trying to say is if you were to do some work for property that you don't own, it would have to meet, there's a constitutional amendment that we'd have to check the boxes of. Ownership of the property is not one of those boxes that would need to be checked. So the county could expend its own funds, you know, in pursuit of, you know, learning more or, and actually doing the project, you know, wherever, whatever stage you were in, we, I could work with you to make sure that the county was covered in extending its own funds. At the point in time that you're seeking other monies from other sources, the details of those grants or, or sources of funding, we would need to look at. And more likely than not, you would see some that require you to own the property. That's not uncommon at that stage.
So in fact, counties and cities across the state provide sewer service and they do it on utility right of way. And they, they serve every private citizen or business along the line. And that's what we're talking about here. We're not talking about a single, service to a single customer, but Arkland that you mentioned is a very strong prospective customer on what would be a longer line. It, it's not a whole lot different than the 107 project that we've had underway. We didn't own that land, but we undertook to do the preliminary studies on it to determine what was involved. And then once that, the engineering studies were done, then we took the next steps of obtaining, obtaining right of way. So this is similar to that, it's, it's.
So it don't have to be, you don't have to own the property that it's going dead in that?
Uh-uh.
But that's, you know, what we talked about in our, our economic.
No, I think for us, I think ultimately we want to have options on it probably, just, but, but again, the ownership is in the right of way. Either easements or ownership.
Is this right? Only thing I don't understand about the right of way on this, I know, like anytime you have rural water projects and all that, it is on right of ways with the county or whatever that they're initiating for or asking for. And I don't understand where this, if this right of way is going through property or it's going through already established.
We don't know. We don't know, Kenneth. It may, it may run along the US highway right of way or a county road right of way. Or you may get a utility easement across private property, just like the phone company does or the electric company does. If they ran to your poultry barns, that's not on county right of way. They, they just obtained an easement. And that's what this, this utility would do as well, just whatever's required to get it where you want it.
Yeah. I mean, I, I see the need, but I'd still go back to the Arkland. This is something that's gonna benefit them and I think it wouldn't be nothing but a fair business deal for something that their business mind to be supportive of it as well.
Well, they are. Again, they were a late arrival, a late arrival to the discussion. That wasn't the initial purpose. But the fact that they're sitting there is important for the project, I think. And if we can, by doing, by making this effort, if we can salvage their jobs and their company, I think that's great for this county. Everything we do is for the benefit of the citizens or businesses in this county, everything we do. So I'm not sure I am understanding the.
Well, with most of these types of grant, I mean, if we did proceed with this and then we apply for a grant, if we were awarded the grant, there's always matching funds. And I believe if Arkland wanted to participate, then, you know, there would be a, an option there for them to, to match funding.
And we're talking about $9,100.
We'll let them participate this time with this, with the, with the survey. I mean, when we met with Arkland, you know, that was our primary source of learning what was going on. It was for me, I assume everyone else. And, you know, we asked, were they afraid of having to close, lose jobs, any of that because of their problem with the sewer that Michael had already went and spoke with Andalusia about because this will all filter back through Andalusia? And their answer was no. It was just be more cost effective to have this for them. So I'm assuming from their, our meeting with them, that that was our primary purpose, was to meet with Arkland because that's who we met with. And then Rick Clifton came in to explain about other things that we were not supposed to talk about.
Right, right.
So.
Anybody else have a question, comment? I would entertain a motion to move forward with this contract if, if we could do that.
I would like to make a motion to move forward. I'd see where this would take us and what obstacles there are in the future. I think the county should take the lead in development of economic project.
So we're talking about a net of 6,100. Contract's 91, 3,000, that covered by River Falls who saw fit to sign on. And so the remainder for us is 61. So there is a motion, is there a second?
I'm on second, just, just because River Falls did step up, we asked them, and they did.
I think for the size of the town, they stepped up big.
Understood it was a two and two vote. The mayor decided.
So we have a motion and a second to enter this contract. Any other questions or comments on it?
It goes back to what I said. I still say that they should be, they should have walked in and said, okay, we're gonna, we'll give something. And it would just, I'm not saying $9,100 to break the county. It's just the fact is, of what it's gonna bring and the influence it has on this business. So to me, a business minded person would say, well, I'll do a portion, just in good faith, you know, just.
This is a, this is an infrastructure development. Normally, I mean, when you signed on for your electricity at the poultry houses, again, Covington Electric had already made the investment and the commitment to the infrastructure to get it to a point where you tapped on. If they, if they tap into this, they will pay. At that point, they'll pay into the project, just like every other customer of every other utility is. You don't normally ask the local businesses to invest in infrastructure development or consideration or planning. That comes at a little later stage is the way that I would interpret.
I misunderstood it then because I thought this was a project to benefit them.
I did too. That's exactly what we were told to.
I didn't think it was just something for the community.
What was told?
This was to benefit this particular business.
What was told at the meeting that we had, the economic development meeting, was that there's an opportunity to, to run this infrastructure possibly and get funding from state funds. They were brought to the table because they had, they had an immediate need that this might help address. That was not the reason that the discussion was started at all. And I think that was made clear in our, in our meeting with Rick Clifton, but maybe not, evidently not, if more than one of us heard it that way. But regardless, they, they would sign on at a later time, Kenneth. They'll, they will pay a tapping fee to get into the service. Any other questions?
Will we be paying this out of the economic development category or which line?
Well, we have a line item there and that would be the appropriate, what, 15,000? 10,000?
It's 15.
Yeah, we have a budgeted amount we can pay out of this, this year. It's already in the existing budget, so that's where I'd like to commit it to. All right, if there's nothing else, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
I only heard one aye, one aye and one no. Is that, is that correct? Did I miss? I'll be.
I saw Michael's mouth move.
I'm gonna say aye, just because if you can give it in there, it does benefit to a certain degree for more businesses that could, there's a piece of property right there that could tap into it. I understand that. Again, it's only gonna be 6,100 for the county. Because like I said, we've talked to River Falls and they did. And we asked them, hey, would you be willing to? And they jumped in and said yes, you know, obviously Andalusia because they're gonna be the big beneficiaries at the end.
And that's me. I said, the three, that's the four people should have a say in this.
And all of those will. If the, if this, if this preliminary assessment determines.
This has been talked about long enough. River Falls had time to make their decision. Andalusia had time to make a decision. And Arkland had time to make a decision.
Yeah.
Were Arkland or Andalusia either one asked to participate in this? Asked directly, just like River Falls was, where they asked.
I didn't ask them to, no. So we have a vote that's two to one. Kenneth, I didn't hear your, I didn't register your.
I'm gonna do.
Okay, so it's a two to two vote and I break the tie saying yes, so we'll move forward with that. Thank y'all. Let's look at the next item under new business, consider the personnel review board recommendation. Consider the personnel review board recommendation. Commissioners, I'm going to ask that we move that to an executive session that will go in at the very end of the day. And just so that I don't, in case I forget it, we will come out of executive session and take action on that personnel review board item, just so that you'll know. All right, so the next item is consider twenty-two-three farmer's banquet request. Karen, what do you have?
We received a request from the op chamber to participate as a sponsor for their twenty-two-three farmer's banquet scholarship, sponsorship. And they have different levels anywhere from a hundred dollars to two thousand. And in the past, y'all have participated, but it's just up if you would like to and if so, what level.
Do you remember what level we did last year? On the last banquet?
We're down a thousand.
Down a thousand.
I think so.
I make a motion.
All right, motion.
Second.
And a second, fund that one thousand dollars. And any other questions on that? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay, that's approved, then a thousand. Consider resolution for Town of Sanford deputy contract. I'm going to ask Ms. Arrington to tell us a little about that resolution specifically.
Yes, so this resolution follows up to Sheriff Turman's request at the last meeting for a contract with the Town of Sanford. Just, I was asked to do a legal review and as part of the check boxes, a resolution by the commission actually needs to be passed to support that versus just the approval that was given at the last meeting. So this resolution captures the legal requirements and the direction that was given at the meeting last session, so.
Okay, so we approved it at the last session, but is there a motion to adopt the resolution that she's prepared and presented to us? All right.
Second.
Motion and second. Other questions? All clear about what we're doing? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right. Consider approval for K nine. Sheriff, is that the one we saw today?
That's the one we saw today. The Bruno, of course, was donated to us by Oakley County Sheriff's Office. The cost is, he's free. And the maintenance and upkeep of the dog will be maintained through the sheriff's discretionary funds. As far as adding the payment to a, you know, we generally give so many hours a week for a deputy to maintain the K nine, the officer that's going to do it is actually on salary. So he would not be affected.
Who's going to have it though?
That Thomas would be over at the, be over at the jail and also be available for us as patrol needs.
Where you going to keep it at the jail?
No, I think Thomas is going to take it back and forth to the house with him.
Where you going to house it when it comes here?
What's that?
When you bring it over, you going to house it in the jail or we going to have a place?
We'll have a place for it, sit outside. Now, there'll be times that he'll need to be housed, you know, in inclement weather and things like that. But the dogs go home with their handlers at night.
What about your other dog that's over there, is it still there?
It's still there.
And are they friends?
They're not in the chapel.
Thank you.
Are they friends, you know?
Well, they might be together.
I mean, yeah, they might be together, but.
Is the other one a male or a female?
Male, they're both males.
They're both male.
So, but we'll make sure all those accommodations are met and everything. So we'll maintain, we'll maintain the records of, on the K nine and maintain the cost.
That's the only two dogs we have, right?
No.
We have three.
Three. What about tracking dogs? Do we have any tracking dogs anymore?
With Bruno, we will.
I mean.
Oh, yes, we do have three tracking dogs, I'm sorry, Ken. We have three tracking dogs that are maintained off site. And they're, they're, they're used to a lot.
I thought one time we had them and I didn't know for sure.
Three, three beagles. Three beagles. Bo, Bo Maverick and Cuja.
They're smaller dogs, right? They're beagles, aren't they?
Little beagles.
When we acquire a dog, is it, I mean, when you take possession, is it automatically covered under insurance? Or do we have to?
No.
Come before.
It has to go before the commission.
They have to have a certain amount of information on the dog to accept it. They have to have the vet records, they have to have the date of birth, the information on the dog.
This dog even has a passport.
But that's all that's required to have immediate coverage? Or we have to approve it before there's any coverage at all?
Y'all approve it and then it's added to the insurance if y'all approve, add it.
So that's the importance of us taking this step today to approve.
Do you have a plan already in place for these dogs as if when the handler might be out of town?
Yes, they will be housed.
And we have a procedure that we're going to follow.
They will be housed at a veterinarian clinic.
Thank you.
They will be housed, they will not be allowed to stay at home and someone else come check on them. No, they're, if it was something that was very last minute, another handler would come and get the dog and we would make accommodations as soon as we possibly could. But no.
Is that a policy you have written on?
Yes, sure is. We have the policy right now. I'd be glad to give you guys a copy of it.
Yes, please.
Any other questions? All right, we'll entertain a motion to approve this K nine officer.
Make a motion.
All right, is there a second?
I'm just still having an issue on this too from the stuff that happened. Currently, until we can see a policy that we know is going to be substantial.
I have it, I can go get it.
But Morgan makes sure everything's good and how we do it.
Do you want to second the motion contingent on her review of the policy and raising questions? If there's a question that, that needs us to take a pause, we just hold on it? But if we bless it.
Is that fair to do that from your perspective?
Then if she blesses it and say, yeah, it looks like it covers all the appropriate things?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a second. Anybody else have a question or concern about that? So we can, that way we can not hold it up another couple of weeks. So we'll vote all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Okay, ayes have. We'll, we'll move forward with that. Subject to Morgan's review and then we'll hopefully get that finally approved this, this morning. All right, consider approval to solicit annual bids. Karen, what do we have?
This is in the engineering department. There are a list of bids packets that need to go out. It's just an annual bid process that we do every year.
Greg, it could be asphalt, I think I got it right in place, asphalt bid. And there could be others to show, we have a southeast region bid and a lot of county often have putting those in for the whole region and we have to get something later on. So I might kind of make a blanket type of bid solicitation.
So, okay. So, so maybe things covered under a, an association bid or you may just have to bid for us and we're giving you approval to move forward with soliciting bids.
Like, for example, like Butler County used to have, or excuse me, Houston County used to cover our Garrel. They don't want to cover that. We do have a county association bid, but sometimes we get a better price by going more local than that.
Okay.
But something may come up, it's just going to run out, so we can, so we'll have to come back.
So this is a general, a general request. Is there a motion to approve solicitation of annual bids in the engineering department?
I make a motion.
All right.
I'll say.
Motion and second, questions, comments? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay. Consider A D M contract for tires.
This is a contract we've had in the past. At one time they stopped this program, but they brought it back. There's a hun, there's a hundred fifty thousand dollars available for scrap tire cleanup and it's usually handled by the engineers department with their cleanup.
So we have a, a chance to pursue funding on scrap tire cleanup? Is, is there a motion to enter this agreement with?
I make a motion.
A D M. Motion and second. Anybody have a question on this? Concerned? All right, we'll vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, thank you. Lynn, why don't you come on up? The next couple of items are related to yours. Consider solicitation of bid for right of way clearing. What do you have for us there?
It's kind of what I discussed earlier, I got to get that package out to bid. I kind of got a rough number. I, we went over to our, our budget meeting, you know, to kind of give you an idea of what we thought was going to be. We didn't actually have to put that out in bid. So that's what that'll be.
Not right of way mowing, but clearing.
Clearing, yeah. That's lemming and like a sky trimmer.
You are considering like thirty, thirty day project or, or just work till?
It could be a week, a week, we could see what a week does. I mean, we can get down to at least a week and do forty hours and see how that goes.
See how it turns out.
Yeah.
Okay. And I know there's a lot of interest among the commission in getting some, seeing some gain improvements on this, so is there a motion?
Companies that do this, right?
Yeah, there's local here, but we put out a bid that we can cover, you know, more area.
Right.
There's some over an evergreen here, there's all, some all over, so.
Would they do this?
At their convenience or would it be, they just come in and start the work?
We're going to probably write it to be in their convenience. It may help us on, on pricing. They may be some lower, slower times for them and if they need something to fill in, I feel we could probably, they'd rather be working than I get any work at all. So I feel we could probably get a better price by doing it kind of at their discretion. But I'm sure they can get, probably get to it in their, in their schedule.
Lynn, on something like this, we have an inspector on site typically so that you have some, one of your men.
We would, just to ensure they, they're getting what we, the specification will, will kind of dictate that anyway. But we'll be there to, you know, kind of oversee it as well.
Good. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Our motion is second to solicit bids on right of way clearing. All right, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, that's approved. Next item, Lynn.
Just our emulsified asphalt bid and we had two bidders and our low bidder was Hunt Refining Company. So I requested we award the bid to Hunt Refining for our emulsified asphalt bid.
Is the price in line with last year?
It's up, it's not much difference. It's up slightly, but, but not bad.
So you heard the recommendation to award to the low bidder? Is there a motion to award this bid? Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And it dropped about twenty cent, Greg, to, per gallon, what it dropped.
Good.
So it's not a big, big change, but it did change slightly in our favor.
But any opposed? All right, that's, that's approved. Why are you there, Lynn? Why don't you go ahead and give us your report?
It just, the big thing right now is bush hogging, our bush hogs up and running. We work Saturday, working six days a week on our bush hog until we get called up.
How many are up?
Uh, three are up right now. We had to wind the break in one of them over Saturday. But we got, some of our tractors and sams are being worked on, hope to pick them up. So we'll get that tractor swapped back out. So we'll have four, hopefully four in running by tomorrow, so. But we have three going today. But, and they will be working like, say, every Saturday until we get, until we get everything called up.
Where are you, in your areas?
I'm going to say red level area right now, Miss Lynn, up around.
Point A.
Point A area, they're, they're kind of north, the northern western third of the county. That way is where they are right now, making their round again, so.
Anything else?
Our 107 project, I spent five hours up there yesterday. They're, we're getting our last little bit of dirt hauled in for that area before we start dumping our base on that. So that's, that's come on pretty good. We got two of our new dump trucks in, that's really helped us out as well. Here, we got those delivered yesterday. So our across Murray Road, I've got our surveyor working on the, on the deed prep or the survey for the deeds that's required for that. And we do need to probably do the, the one additional landowner as far as taking care of that right of way for that as well, Greg, so. Because we had one other, right near was the last one we was looking at getting right of way from those guys.
So we need to add them to the list.
Just add those to the list, yeah.
We need to prove that second, I mean additionally or?
What, I don't remember exactly what our motion was previously. We approved purchasing or requiring right of way.
I mentioned two, I know there was, but there's, there's, there's a third that we'll need to, we'll need to get.
I mean, on any, any project we're obtaining right of way. And, and a couple of these have said, we're going to, we're willing to sell to you and we've established that price, that's going to hold for every landowner that requires that.
I got you. And there, there is one other one, there's about eight thousand square foot. It's not very much right of way at all, but there is going to be a slight bit of one, additional one there as well.
A fourth one?
A fourth one, yeah, right there at the, where the road starts on one of the lots right there.
So we'll, and we've already approved the.
Okay.
Yeah, so we should move forward. We should be fine under the previous.
But anyway, our surveyors work on that and so we get those deeds pressed, we'll start, you know, hopefully get our.
At this point, surveyor has it.
Yes.
The surveyor will establish price and then we'll be ready to deliver.
Yes.
Payment for signed deeds, right?
Yes. And he's just got to establish some landline so I can, I could get real, real close with it, but not knowing exactly where the landline is, he'll have to be the one to.
Okay.
To, to get that established, that's why I got to get hired.
Help move that along with us now. All right, we should have authority. What else?
Just for our ARPA, we've got all our roads. Hopefully in about two weeks, we'll have most of District Four's ARPA funds taken care of. We've been getting those roads ready. Like I said, the contract will be back, I think, in two weeks to maybe take care of those roads as well.
Good to hear. All right, questions for Lynn? Thank you, Lynn. Get back on, on the agenda, then we consider vision insurance with Southland. Karen, you want to tell us a little about this?
This is an opportunity we have with our insurance company to take on a vision plan for our employees. At this point, we're recommending that having it available, they would have to pay the premiums. It's twelve dollars for single coverage, twenty dollars for a family coverage a month. And it, I called this morning, just double checking some of the different optometrists and all the ones I called actually accept that coverage, Southland. I did not re, I had two that did not open at the time that I had called. But I do think that it, it will be something that's widely available, accepted. I did talk with some people from the state. They said they already have this part, policy and they have good coverage with it.
So what we're proposing is that we make this available at the, at the discretion of the employee, at the cost to the employee, nothing, nothing lost. I mean, if they don't want it, they can stay where they are currently, which is a fairly small coverage for, for their vision, so.
And there's no required number of participants to get this. If one person wants it, then they can have.
So is there a motion to contract for vision coverage with Southland? That's proposed.
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions? We have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right. And then the next on the agenda is consider the twenty-two-four budget. Let's, let's just start into that and it may go quickly. If not, we'll, if it goes too long, we'll take a break, a recess, but I think we're good right now. So just, yes, sir.
Do you want to go ahead and take care of what the sheriff went and got? He went and got that for her?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm sorry.
This is the policy of, and on the policy that plainly states where the K nine will be housed in the absence of the handler.
Okay.
And it will be at a, at a veterinarian's office.
All right, all right, thank y'all. So just two or three major points from the budget. The commission met in a workshop last week, a public workshop open to one, we had one media representative here. So if you have questions, ask her. She covered it all. Specifically, we, we are proposing an COLA increase, cost of living increase for employees of five percent. There was a three point five percent increase in the health insurance premium this year that will go into effect October and the proposed budget absorbs that increased premium at the commission level, so the employee will not have to pay that. We talked about merit raise option, department heads that asked for some. Do you have a list, I think, that you're, that's been brought? We didn't have that in our workshop, but we did have, briefed. We talked about merit raise, uh, option, the department heads that asked for some. Do you have a list, I think, that you're, that's been brought? We didn't have that in our workshop, but we did have brief discussion on it. And there was a request from the department heads to, uh, allow this. So you see the proposal there, this total of twenty thousand five hundred dollars. We could change line items within that if you choose, or we could, uh, adopt it, incorporate it into the budget up, straight up and down. And then, uh, you guys all had a copy of the budget. You have your notebook with you this morning. Uh, the budget was balanced. We had two hundred and something thousand dollars in discretionary, uh, in, uh, contingency funds built in for cushion. Uh, there were some changes that were noted during our conversation, and I, you tell me, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Karen, but she's given a cover page that, rather than incorporate the proposed changes into the budget itself, she gave us this cover page that, uh, recaps those items. So seventy-five thousand dollar budget, uh, line item for a, a bucket truck or a lift, that's in the, uh, maintenance department. Uh, and obviously, that's not a new bucket truck, but, uh, maybe a good one off of surplus or whatever.
One that cranks.
One that cranks and runs. Uh, a reduction in, uh, vehicles in the sheriff's department of one hundred and sixty-five thousand. We had a line item there that, that was overstated, and so we corrected that.
Decreased to one hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Decreased to one sixty-five, not by one sixty-five.
And I think it was an overstatement in the request, so I think they were, yes.
Okay. Uh, software is an increase, uh, from one thirty to one forty. I see how it's laid. I'm sorry. So that, that was an eighty thousand dollar change on the vehicles. An increase of sixteen thousand in software, uh, in the sheriff's department also, where you were looking at upgrading to match what nine one one and the local, other, uh, cities are, are providing right now. Have they, have they all gone to that already, or is, is a transition that's taking place now?
Often in the list, you're already with the system. Uh, the, the contract for the system has the E nine one one, it's about this fire, and, uh, we all want to get on the same sheet of paper, so we can fit a little more straight line.
Okay.
Blake, can you some, was this the, is this the software that?
It's software.
The guy talked with us about a month ago.
Alright, the next item is, um, inmate medical. The request amount was seven fifty, seven hundred and fifty thousand. The, uh, amount we'd like to change that to is four hundred and fifty thousand. We, we don't, we just need to work hard, hard, hard at medical. That's a terrible cost that we're having to, uh, cover. And the four fifty is in line with the contract we have in place. If we could keep from having overruns and outside services and stuff, we know Michael's been heavily involved in that, and, uh, we just want to maybe meet once a month over the next few months and see if we can't make some progress in getting a handle on inmate medical. So the proposal is to drop that back to four hundred and fifty thousand. And then E M A requested a, an increase of one employee, and you see the series of expenses related to adding employee. If you put a motor vehicle in that at new price, and I think the discussion was to try to get something, either get a grant or a donated vehicle, but if you had to cover it for new price, then the total cost of that one employee and related equipment is a hundred and two thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars, so. That's where we are. The changes that are proposed here are, are well, well within the bounds of, of the budget that we worked on the other day, so we can cover this and still have, uh, contingency monies on hand.
One other thing was added in was the employee, uh, additional employees for the sheriff's office, and that would be up to your, your discretion on how y'all would supersede that.
So, so what, where we ended up in the budget, I think, was three, uh, school resource officers with the idea that the third one of those is not, not, uh, a hire. It's, uh, waiting until there's a change. There's one that's under the, uh, that's employed by the board of education, and if and when he retires, then that would give us a, a slot to fill. And, uh, that was contingent on the board of education agreeing to cover half of the cost related to those added employees. And, uh, and then we had looked at, the budget contemplates adding one, one patrol officer to the sheriff's budget, to department. Uh, I think his, his interest was in four or five. We're looking at one that's already in the line item. And then I think we could come back at a later date. If you said, I've got to have two more, let's, let's deal with that outside of this, the budget, which gets cumbersome in its own right, so. So we did add one. Yes, sir.
Uh, for, for, for the jail, is it like any mention of a vehicle for the jail?
That was in the. It was in the original budget, so that, if, if we approve this.
They got one last year, right?
They did.
Got a van?
Van.
So what would that one be?
A truck.
They said, they said that there was a, um, van that's going down. I guess, um, conditions deteriorating, and so they were wanting to get a truck and.
The, the white correction van, the, the dog's caravan, it's, it's at end of service.
Okay. Um, you know, if we, if we wanted to, if we, these items that I just went over were, were in the discussion the other day, and that, and if we approved it as is, and it would just, it would just insert that into the budget, we would come back and rework the numbers and present it. But, uh, you know, so we could entertain a motion to approve the budget as, as with the changes proposed, or y'all have other thoughts, and we'll open the floor for discussion on that now.
We, me and Kent, I know, have had a discussion about the D C N O development type thing, splitting that into two payments. Um, I think, maybe we can see how that goes. I know they got a whole brand-new staff over there.
Brand-new officers, officers, yeah.
Yes, officers, that's what, um, I'd like to see how that goes. Um, other than that, I've, the best I could look at on my phone, and I got this today, because I've been out of town, but the best I could follow it, I'm, I'd make a motion.
Alright.
Can I add one more issue? Um, I did get notified Friday of, of requests from the city of Andalucia to increase animal, um, the animal shelter appropriation by ten thousand. So that would be something that, uh, we'll, we'll consider that contract at a later date, but it, since we're aware that they are asking for more, I think we might need to consider that increase.
Because I, I did, I didn't, you make an idea, look at that, and I thought, man, we carry that many animals?
Right.
I know, wasn't it something?
Wow, I was in, I was in total shock of how many animals.
So we don't have animal control officer, and the way we've handled that is contracted with Andalucia to allow rural citizens to bring animals to their shelter, and we, we pay a, an annual appropriation under that contract. Chair?
As far as, uh, my officers bringing animals there, we have done it. If it's a nuisance animal and we can't, uh, find an owner or something, we have done that, but, uh, we really don't do that very much.
Yeah, but the citizens do.
But the ci- but the citizens do, so I just, I just wanted to voice that, so.
So what's the, what's the increased amount that they proposed?
An additional ten thousand, so thirty thousand, I think it's titled versus the twenty.
Instead of the twenty thousand, we've been paying on the contract, it'd go to thirty, and there has not been an increase in.
Several, five to six years.
Six years, seven.
It's a great service.
Yeah.
And we do have a facility to take from.
Yeah.
Anytime.
That's right.
There was a lot of them. Um, I do need to say something before we vote. First of all, if you can share it with us, Karen, what's the county debt as of today?
I'd pull my sheet out. About thirteen million, I believe, but I hope it missed it.
Well, we're way down some then, so that's good.
That's correct.
We're gonna get towels, won't we, there?
We hope so. Y'all have done a really good job of might add a new debt. I think that it's moving in the right direction.
And the other thing I wanted to say, I, I don't agree with the economic development monies that we provide. Several years ago, it was, uh, done in a different way, where we gave them an amount, and then we reserved an amount, and every time a new business was brought into the county, then they got money for it. And I know economic development here doesn't need the money, but it's just the service that the county, I guess, has always provided for them since they've been here. Uh, I really like that idea. I like that plan. Um, I know in those years, they never got any money because nothing was brought. But I'm all for economic development. I would give anything if we could see some industry brought here for jobs. We had high-paying jobs here that we don't have right now. So I don't want anybody to misinterpret that I'm not for economic development because I am. That's the end.
Okay. Alright. So we've had other discussion, but Michael, I think, I, I heard you make a motion to adopt the budget. Is that correct? Before we, and then we got sidetracked. Discuss without a second, but.
Without a second.
Alright, so there was a motion and second. You clear on what the motion is?
I believe that's correct, except the changes that we've mentioned.
Still looking for the debt.
Alright.
One thing I'd like to say, I'm glad the county was able to absorb the cost of the insurance. That's a, that's a pretty good increase for the employees that we have. You know, I know for the last couple of years, we'd actually give it six percent, and it just, this year, what, what we could get, but we got as close as we could. So technically, you look at it, that's about eight percent.
Increase.
Increase. By the time we absorb their, their insurance and, and give them the cost of living, that's a pretty substantial benefit for these employees discounted, which I think, you know, of course.
Certainly deserved.
Right now, we're going to pay it any way you look at it, but it is what it is with the, with the money we have.
That's right. Alright. Any other comments? Questions? If not, we'll vote all in favor of adoption of the budget as, as, uh, adjusted and, and proposed. Say aye. Opposed? Same sign. Alright, that budget is adopted for the coming year. Uh, any other staff reports? Susan, Kevin? Now Kevin and I have had discussions. Commissioners, you, you got a copy of the grand jury report. As you know, the grand jury goes into session regularly through the year, and part of their process is to go through all the buildings of the county, courthouse, administration building, the, uh, county board of education building, the jail, and they then write a report, a grand jury report on that, and they identify needs and so forth. If you saw the report that just came out, you, uh, following up with Kevin on that, almost every item that they carried forward from all reports has been addressed, from an HVAC out in the jail that's not, uh, to painting needing to be done around windows in the jail. There probably does need to, but that's something I know the sheriff's folks have been diligent about working with, and so if there's need for paint that we can help you with, or something, let us know. I think it may be available now.
It's not available right now.
We may find it, so if we do, we'll get it to you. Alright.
I was impressed with the fact the jail didn't have any other findings other than the ones. I thought that was great.
We did the best with what we have.
It's the industrial on that one that is very hard to, to get, but we can get some, and they can co-match it to any color, so.
Okay, good.
It may not be the exact same kind, but there are some of those.
Some options.
There are now, but previously, there was not.
Right.
They just didn't have any industrial, they didn't get any.
Okay. Well, maybe we'll get that off of the grand jury list then, about that. That'd be good. Alright, um.
Is the old jail on the historical register, so anything that would be done there, it'd have to be a prior approval anyway, wouldn't it? Cause I know that was one of the recommendations as well.
Yeah. It would. It's been, that's been looked at for the, with the idea of creating office space in that over the years, Karen, and there's, I mean, Lynn, and, uh, it's very, very, very cost prohibitive on, per square foot of usable space. It's, uh, folks would love to see that done. I'd love to see it, but I don't know that we'll ever be able to pull that off.
It would just be the fact of redoing walls this thick for a smaller room to make something that, restructure something that would be stable.
Okay.
Do we need to be looking for other options for the DA's office and pardon and paroles, as they mentioned in here, and the cramped space? And we visited up there, uh, a couple of years ago, and it, it was tight quarters.
Yeah. I think we need to keep our eye open for space within close proximity. I've had, I had opportunity over the years of, of discussing with the DA his office, uh, space needs, and, and I encourage y'all to do the same thing, and, and, uh, you know, I'm, I'm sure he watches for opportunity. I do, and if y'all will, then maybe we'll find the right opportunity. Uh, the DA, district attorney's office is a state agency. We're just required to provide office space. I don't know how much is the required amount, but all, all the offices up in the courthouse probably could use more space, couldn't they, Judge?
Thank you, Ed.
Well, is that something that we could get, given to us? So if we're looking, we say, okay, well, that building's out of the question. It's not enough square footage, you know? If their DA's required to have X amount, if they are, pardon and paroles, uh, there's not.
There's not a, there's not an amount that I'm aware of. Not, certainly not a legal requirement, but just the, the general operational requirements, whatever it takes to meet their needs of the moment.
Does it have to be in the courthouse?
Could they annex it, right?
Can annex, so create an annex elsewhere, so.
Could they be housed in the same building, the DA's office and pardon and parole, if they were, you know, separated?
They are now.
I think pardons and paroles, could they separate it without any issue? I don't know why they would have to be at the courthouse. You know, I can see why the DA would have to be.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What's in the basement where the sheriff's old office and all used to be? Anything?
Driver's license?
We, well, the sheriff never had that office. It was always driver's license. The, uh, the room in the basement is basically, uh, it's like a break here with, uh, the restroom down there.
And their files down there, Judge?
Yes, there are files.
Just under nine million.
Stores as well.
Yeah. I tell you, we need, we probably need to set up a, a walk-through at the courthouse, so y'all can see that basement space and, and.
See the bathrooms.
That's not the basement, is it? No, I'm just joking, Chuck. We'll look at those.
Chuck needs an exhaust fan in the bathroom.
Alright.
Miss Lynn.
Need a bigger office.
We're just under nine million. We actually paid down on that, so he caught me off guard, but just under nine.
And I thought I seen that, but what, I'm saying, and he said, I'm like, maybe I missed.
I knew there was something supposed to pay out, and I, I didn't.
Two thousand of your gas taxes were passed.
The prior commissions in this one, I think, for the last several, several terms, the commission has done a great job of getting this county down to under nine million dollars in debt.
Oh, absolutely, they have. And, and I have to brag on the department heads for.
For helping.
For helping, for keeping their budgets where they need to be.
Especially the ones that are here right now.
Alright. Commissioners, y'all have anything else, uh, that you want to bring up before we go into executive session? Is it appropriate for us to go into executive session?
It is. Um, if the record could reflect that there are two items I would like to discuss with the commission in executive session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act under, um, uh, paragraph three of, uh, section seven.
Okay. So with that in mind, and I will remind you, we will come out and take action on one item at the end of this, no other items. And that will be a non-discussion item. We can tell you, we can tell you what that result is. Uh, newspaper, if you want us to, if you want to call, you want us to call you, we can do that, or you can hang around. I don't think we'll be in executive session. I can't imagine it taking over twenty, twenty-five minutes, so it won't take that long to come back. So with that in mind, we will move into executive session with a motion.
Alright.
And a second. All in favor?
I think we have to poll on this one.
Okay. We got a motion. Alright, I'll, uh, we'll poll. Yeah, Kenneth?
Yes.
Michael, Lynn?
Yes.
And Tom?
Yes.
So we had four ayes to move into executive session. Thank y'all again for being here. We'll be back in in a few minutes.